So, um, I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss administrate our early retirement.
So we're gonna leave for a few minutes, like five minutes, no more? Your cookies here. I'm gonna put them on the table, alright? You guys feel free to outdo something, okay? Just a quick bit of time.
I mean, they're not like your mother's cookies. Not the thing, no.
Nobody checked up before everybody came in?
Like he was on rock scale for, you know, probably a year.
And then what?
He was on rock scale.
What did that mean?
Oh, cool. He was dancing.
Oh, wow.
For a rock scale and now he's, he's written his own musical and they're gonna do a full production of it this summer in Arizona. And then with the whole club bringing it to New York. He's just one of those people who, like, I mean, he was my friend at high school and I just look at him and I'm like, oh my god. You're, it's crazy.
Oh, I like went in the same direction.
And he was in a course line, they did a course line in the city center in Manhattan. That's like two years in Manhattan.
No, it's like, yeah.
This presenting on the overhead. It's just by you.
I didn't know if it was necessary, they just have it set up there. So it could be another part of the agenda, but I'm not. Jackie's always in this.
Always.
She's really serious. This is my job with Jackie, to make her look up and then go.
You did, I had a test, the meeting, we usually meet to talk about what we do in high school. So I made Ken brainstorm what we've been doing in high school.
What can I say, what can I say?
I texted Ryan, I was like, can you go, I have a test? And he was like, no. I was like, okay. I was like, I'm not coming to the meeting either. And I was like, sounds good.
Well, you know, you can leave at any time. You don't have to stay. I tail it out, Jackie, it's fine. You guys have your part in the beginning for a reason. It's like, once I start talking policy, you just go, gotta go.
I know for any other meeting. I wish I did, but I don't.
I know, I know.
How many times did you have to come back after your body?
Uh, that's why I thought twice, right? And then we went to another workshop in Madison.
I didn't see your film.
You know, I pretty much sharing to the.
I was like, I'm joking, Mr. Stevens was like heading out the door. I see Sarah's moving, I'm like, nobody's seen this.
That would be over some.
That's right, he's the most important, you know, admiring person. That's why I'm second in command. They're talking about a retirement plan, administrative retirement. Don't look at me. Your dog is no longer a puppy.
No, he's five.
I remember when you got him as a puppy. We used to watch him in this grave, like busting down stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
So funny. That's great. It's amazing.
You had Australian shutters, right?
I had a border collie. And a deer, deer, great, like family dog. I do too.
They're mugs, but they, we, we were looking at pet finders, we were looking for dogs that had heard and breeds, just kind of love those kind of dogs. And they have great, like our twelve year old, she went a long way, but. How long did your dog live?
She, she was such a nice dog. She lived until she was fourteen, but apparently was suffering for quite some time. And we brought her on a vacation, it was a very nice resort, up in like upper Vermont. And she was getting a little older, so we're like, oh, let her with us. She had a great time. And then at the end of the, and we were hiking and doing all this stuff, and she couldn't jump in the back of my car. I was like, I have some good stuff. And they were like, wow, you know, she, she was so sweet, you never would have, she acted like a puppy right up until the end. Yeah, so we haven't replaced her after, because she started to chew my dog. Yeah, and I got it, you know, and I worked too much to, to tear it together. Best for, like, with the kids when we don't think, she would just loop up and around all of us, you know, trying to keep us together. It's really true. So you guys are on break? This is a long haul, the fall until like December break is a long haul.
And with it being a full week?
I know.
High school is a special place right now.
Special's one where.
Are you ready for a group tomorrow?
I, I'm prepared to be dressed.
Wait, can I hear what your idea is? We don't have one, we just wrote a bunch of N words on the board last night.
I gave them a good idea, and they were, they were underwhelming, I have to say. Because they're the M part of the alphabet. So I said to them, I was like, you guys need to do something with the letter M.
So we wrote Merry the Holidays, and then we wrote.
I think that's a great idea in our group.
Nice.
We, I think we have every mixed something.
Yeah, we do.
We do, yeah. Yeah, we do, we have everybody who's a mix.
Yeah.
McMerry, McChristmas.
But there's, and then there's like two or three people, these names start with N A.
Marian, great.
Marian, Maran, Marsh, Massia.
Marian.
Or Maran, they say we can spread this.
Yeah, so I've had them for four years. I'm kind of sad that they're gonna leave me.
I know.
And then I'm gonna get this new group.
And probably a whole different letter to learn.
I'm at almost the same group. I mean, like, I think I ended up with like, one audition in four years, right? I don't think so. No, she was the addition.
Yeah. I remember you saying that to us in the first year, you were like, you guys are me, Padru, I just came up having the same Padru.
Yeah. And then they leave you after a couple years, and you're so sad.
Yeah, it's weird. Well, not close, but like how much I've grown to like four years. Because he's, he's my teacher, I'm like, you know, like my savior.
Because teachers are.
But it's like, no, the teachers that you hear about.
Yeah, that I was enjoying her.
The teachers you hear about. It's fun, but anyway, you just like, wow, you're like, wow. And ask them, like. Rather than like, oh, you know? So, that's, that's awesome. Yeah, exactly. He's become a legend in my eyes, basically.
Oh, legends.
Rather than, who's, who's that?
Mr. Bell.
You're an absolute queen.
I love Mr. Bell.
Is he a teacher?
Yes.
He cares so much.
He does, and we go so hard for the door every year.
Oh, you guys always win.
Maybe my idea, because it's genius.
Well, I love this vibe.
Everybody wins, because.
We, we win every year.
My thought was, it's underwhelming.
What do you get her, you've never seen Mr. Bell's door?
It's beautiful. And then they take it down like the next day.
I can't tell you that. And then I will call you to, and take all the posters off my door. They'll sabotage me.
Are we doing like stand in the bathroom stall, and it feels like, it's a dream, and we have like a hat and then a boot on the bottom? Oh, that's great.
Which room are you guys in?
I'll come, I'll come walk by. My group never does anything, our group always has like four ideas going at once, and then we just settle on like not doing a door. Well, it's usually like, just, there's paper over the door, but like nothing else on it. Or sometimes people like draw things, but.
It's like, use your imagination.
Really?
That's it, that's all.
One year.
They won one year.
This was when they still did it in period two. So it was one of my AP classes, it was.
Overachievers.
Had to be 3D.
They went wild. The island of misfit historical figures.
It's on my wall.
Oh, yeah, 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 I've seen it, I've seen it. Pride and joy.
That is discipline.
Door decorating's tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Thank you for your patience.
We had a great time.
Alright. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak? Oh, so sorry. So I did, I apologize. Our guests. Any member of the public? Okay. Student.
So Ryan today is at the auditions for the musical, so you can ask Ryan us, they're doing Newsies this year. It's gonna be super amazing. So last week, Hand launched their new policies for vaping in school. So now we have teachers' monitors outside most of the bathrooms, and that's supposed to cut down the amount of kids who are going in there to use things during school. Last Friday, we participated in the statewide pajama day for the Connecticut Children's Hospital. So every student who wanted to wear the pajamas would donate, and it was a lot of fun, a lot of kids were participating. And this week, getting ready for winter break, we have our spirit week, so today was sports jersey day, and then we'll have ugly sweater day, and then another pajama day. So that'll be fun. As we were talking about, we had a meeting on Monday, yesterday, to prep, and then every, like, there's POG groups, so those are groups of students who meet, uh, once a month, and they planned how to decorate their door. And then we have a door decorating contest tomorrow, so that'll get everyone in the holiday spirit as well.
How she did, yeah? Several. Several.
Superintendent's report.
Question, Jackie?
Absolutely, please.
Jackie, what's the reaction in terms of the vaping policy and the increased presence of teachers? Getting any sense of the reaction of students? Is it on their radar screen, or is it?
I know some kids were kind of upset about it, because there's teachers sitting outside the bathrooms. I had one of the teachers tell me actually, the more disgusting thing, they're not really seeing people going in there with anything, but the more disgusting thing is that they can hear when the sinks go on and all the guys walk out without washing their hands. Other than that, I don't think the students really mind, and I'm going to the bathroom, it's kind of peculiar to have teachers outside of that, but I, I mean, kids don't really say, oh, well, now I'm not gonna go in there and duel like I used to openly. So I wouldn't be able to tell you how effective it's been recently.
So time will tell.
Yeah.
Thank you. Better than scarecrow, you know, intention that you have the, the presence there, so you think twice, and, and they're not on the same side, I think, I'm not mistaken, is that the same side of the hallway? Isn't it like they're positioned across the hallway? Like, in the hallway, they're not, like, the door's not here, they're like on the other side.
Like, yeah, but within like five feet of the bathroom door, it's like pretty close.
Keep us posted. They're observation. You gotta hand wash change, fine boys.
Well, I mean, no, but has there been any peer pressure to say, well, if you don't want teachers posted outside the doors, maybe we oughta not be vaping in the bathrooms?
Alright.
Thank you, Jackie. Alright, superintendent's report.
Alright, I brought some friends, a little small little army here. There's four chairs with a box of cookies. Okay.
Do the kids go there?
Yes. Young adults.
Yes, and I'd like, of course, Mrs. Stott and Mr. Kiefer as well, if you guys wanna pull up right alongside them. So I'm gonna give you the brief little intro, as brief as I can, which is gonna be, and I'm gonna hand it over to you guys, have a conversation and just talk, and then there's gonna be some questions and answers. Sarah, you're better at this, you can show up the room, but you've done it plenty of times. Okay, so, for board members who were not here last year, um, two years ago, we, we implemented in the code, in the program of studies, independent study course as a pilot. This is a, a long process from, you know, how does, how do we do a capsule project, and there's a lot of history that we can share another time. Piloted last year, Sarah was one of the five, five, right, students that piloted last year. We got rave reviews from the five students, and we got rave reviews from Mrs. Stott, for her support role, and we actually presented, um, at an international conference in Boston. Uh, I think all five students, right? Myself, Stott, whole team of us went up there and presented, uh, to educators in Boston at an international conference, the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, it was great experience. Kids did great. Uh, we offered the course again, twelve, twelve students took us up this time. Um, it is a half a credit?
Half a credit, and one trimester.
Yeah, one trimester, and then have the kids explain the very open-ended, uh, kind of experience for the kids. Very different projects that they've all pursued here, um, they can talk about those. But from, from my perspective, I'm learning a ton about motivation, about, you know, intrinsic motivation, about the value of creating programs that allow kids to pursue their passions, their interests, um, and to do that in a way that is facilitated by a teacher, um, and focuses on, and I love Caitlin pointed out to us that you are fifteen twenty-first century capacities that we talk about around this table all the time. Caitlin saw them and was like, why did anybody ever show me these before? And little does she know that they're in curriculum documents, we never really held that chart up and showed that to the kids. That's the glue to the course, though, picking two of those outcomes, but they get to pick the content. So they get to pick, I'm gonna study, I can't describe your code. I can describe what I learned from Anastasia's, because I went home and I criticized my wife for using dirty materials, which she was making up. But I'll let them take over and describe what their project was, and I think it's good that we can have a conversation with them about their experience, and I asked Mr. Kiefer and Mrs. Stott to contribute along the way, um, as needed. So who wants to go first?
Yes.
Kate has a problem, we're working on her shyness.
I'm really introverted, and like, it's just hard for me to talk to people.
Made in Rome.
Yeah.
Fire away, Kate.
So, I basically did, um, I curated a gallery essentially, so I had a space for my parents, and they were renting it out, and I have it until December thirty first. So I was like, what am I gonna do with this? And, um, so, I'm just gonna go into the history of my project a little bit, it'll be fast, I promise. Um, so basically, me and my mom have always talked about how Madison doesn't really have a space for everyone to be, or at least if they do, it's not very well advertised or anything like that. And so there are a bunch of really, there's really vibrant communities in separate areas of, you know, one big community, which is Madison. So for example, we have the senior center, which has, you know, the Madison Art Society and really great programs like that, but then we also have, you know, Creations Downtown, which has an art therapy program through Vista. And then we also have like the high school, which as you can see, has really incredible art. But it's like, they're not coexisting in any way, it's kind of, they're just, they're separate. And so I decided, you know, what is something that can bring these entities together, like, what can I do to bring the community together? And I obviously saw, like, that vibrancy is all communicated through art, and so I was like, okay, perfect, I'll just curate a gallery. I mean, why not? What are you gonna do? So I decided, through like a long-winded journey through this class, that, um, you know, I was going to get everyone together and kind of have an opening night, try to form community events in, so that I could actually successfully and permanently bring the community together, which I feel like I achieved in some ways, but, you know, there's always work to be done. Um, so for example, one of those was, uh, as I mentioned, just mentioned, um, I had opening night, which I thought was really successful, because I saw people there that I didn't know, that I, I knew were high schoolers, or they were seniors at the senior center, but there was a really wide variety of people, and a wide variety of like diversities, and, um, you know, like political opinions and anything like that. So it was like creating this discussion through art, which is exactly what I wanted to happen. And, you know, I actually told everyone in like my little spiel, I was like, guys, go talk to the artist, which I didn't think was gonna happen, because when you tell people to do things, they usually don't do it. And so, they did it, and it was really exciting, because I got to talk to the artist after about like what, those conversations that they had, and it was like, people were really curious about other people's experiences. Which was kind of the point of the gallery, I named it catharsis, which was after Aristotle's term, which is like the purgation, or like the purging of, you know, any emotion or anything towards one specific thing, basically, if that makes sense. So I kind of appropriated that to be, you know, instead of having pity or fear for one group over the other, let's, you know, guess know them through the intimate medium, medium of art, which, you know, I think I succeeded with. And then, you know, for, to create like a lasting and permanent effect on the community, I did the Kindness Rocks project through the gallery, which kind of reached a different population than the opening night does, because you can't really invite kids, like, you know, under ten to an opening night, they'll be bored, like, I'm sorry, that's just how it is. So they, a bunch of kids came to the Kindness Rocks event, and they, you know, it might not have been the most aesthetically pleasing rocks, we'll say that. But you can always write a positive message on them, and that just cleans it right up. So, so I'm definitely going to put those around Madison, and probably kind of try to create like a social media kind of campaign to keep the community, you know, speaking through that, you know, through art, um, after the gallery closes. So that's basically it for my project, and then can I say like a little bit about like what about this class? Okay, great. So, basically, this class was great, um, it's the best thing ever. So, what I learned from this class, um, was how to communicate rather than regurgitate. So specifically with education, it was, which I actually got from, um, I mean, I made that up all by myself, just kidding. So I, I went, I went on a tour to, at Sarah Lawrence, um, on Friday, I think, and they do, uh, instead of having exams, they do projects like this called conference projects, and I was like, oh my gosh, this is incredible, because I wish every class was like this, but, anyway, so you learn through this class, like, skills rather than just like cold hard facts. Like, to me, education is about whether you have the aptitude to learn something new rather than learning the skills. And I mean, certainly, I guess addition and multiplication are important, but it's whether I can, you know, take what I've, like, take the critical thinking, take, um, you know, curiosity, my own academic curiosity, and transfer that to any range of different topics, which I think I did through this, and that I'm going to learn to do at schools like Sarah Lawrence or projects like this, that I can actually, you know, learn about something that I care about through like, you know, that sort of lesson. So I think that was really important to me. And, um, you know, you learn about a lot, a lot about yourself, and I think our final like catharsis at the end of, um, this class was that it takes a certain person, like, the independent project is not for everyone. It depends on where you are as a student, where you are as a person, and I think that we all found that we were intrinsically motivated to really get this done. And for me, it came down to, and I think Sarah and I were talking about this and a few other people, it was, we were willing to like consume ourselves with this project, like really get in it, because it's, it's a passion project for us, and if we don't see it done, it's, you know, we've left something about ourselves unfinished. So, that's, that's my project.
Kate, can you do me one favor?
Of course.
Hi, um, Mrs. Stott just said to me, she basically is saying, all of the things you've pounded your fist about, Mrs. Kiefer, the education sport. How much time do we prep together as a group tonight? How much time?
Zero.
Zero.
You were ten seconds earlier.
Oh, yeah, right. I wasn't even there, I was late.
I just wanted to hold the record that those were your words.
Yes, they were, yes.
Are we keeping you up? You're going next.
So I'm Anastasia, I'm a junior, and my project was all about clean beauty, which is basically makeup that's free of chemicals, because today in the beauty industry, for whatever reason, uh, the companies like to put a lot of harmful chemicals in our beauty products, and it ranges from anything from toothpaste to soap, or even just, um, um, foundations, and so you don't have to just be a woman, this applies to all genders, everyone. And I ended up making a presentation, which was not the original plan, I was gonna do a documentary, and then I kind of realized that today, I felt, my audience, my target audience was, um, young adults and adults, and I realized that I don't have the attention span to sit and watch an hour-long documentary, even if it's something that I like. So after a slight little breakdown, Mrs. Stott and Sarah, we decided to do the presentation and a little mini-series. So I got to work alongside, um, a few companies, and even Jenny Friesa Downtown, which is a clean beauty boutique, and I did a video with them on a clean beauty swap. So basically, you go there and you'll bring any products you use, and they'll swap them out for stuff they have in the store, and we film that process, and I'll be coming out in the new year. And that really helped me get insight on what I wanna do with my life, and because of my input with Jenny and her company, they put a new, um, random makeup, new evolutions cosmetics in their store, which has a lot more glittery fun colors, because the clean beauty industry lacks fun colors, and that's something I love. So throughout this project, I wanted to answer the question, how can I stay clean without sacrificing my creativity? And so I emailed a bunch of companies, they basically said, just, there's not a demand for it, so that was my inspiration, I want the youth to get involved, people my age to stay clean and make a demand for these products. And I think that's definitely with Jenny and bringing this new company into the light, I think I definitely accomplished that with this class.
And you were one of the first that partnered with an outside person as closely as you did. We also had James.
Yes.
Who's not here tonight, couldn't make it, but with the 3D printing as well, partnered with a fellow from St. Mary's Hospital on that, but your partnership was cool. And I think you were the first to bring in an outside person to serve on a panel when we evaluated the presentation, so it wasn't just me and Mrs. Stott and the teachers, I mean. And, um, you know, I know we had Mr. Duquesne also come for Sarah's.
Smart, you planted a ringer in the.
Married, married last year. The folks who came from the therapeutic writing program.
Right, that's right, I'm sorry, I did forget about that. Excellent, awesome. Great work. We're gonna keep going and we'll circle back, if you have questions individually for all of them. Okay, nothing to do with the prior two, Caitlin?
Yeah. I went in a really different direction. So I really like robots, I do a lot of robotics outside of school, and I was looking for a way that I could bring in something I liked to school, because I didn't find that like it was, I took EP comp sci my sophomore year, but beyond that, there wasn't a lot of computer science classes for me to take, so I wanted to.
Were you waiting till your sophomore year to take it?
Yeah. But like after that, there wasn't really that much. So I finished, they were talking about an app development class that he put in for the high school, but it didn't end up working out, so I wanted a way to continue my computer science knowledge, so I decided to take an independent project that could help me with robotics, so I did neural networks, which were like artificial intelligence, if you've heard of that. So basically, it's training computer how to think. And originally, I had this idea, I was going for a scholarship at a university where I needed to make a project that could help another person, um, but the scholarship ended up falling through, and I had to do, I didn't have anything to do anymore. So, um, I decided to make an app for kids that identifies different bugs using a neural network or artificial intelligence. So this is where my presentation lost everybody, but, um, I learned how to make artificial intelligence, uh, like, it's called a model, um, and I put it into an Android app. So right now, the Android app like exists locally on the few devices that I put it on, but over break, I wanna put it on Google Play Store, which shouldn't be too difficult. So what I really got out of the project, what I really got out of the project was the opportunity to apply what I was learning in school. I use so much math, you have no idea, so I ran a math class to take at hand this year, but I was taking linear algebra at Wesleyan, and all of the neural networks of was linear algebra, which was amazing. Like, I, like, that math is so absurd, you didn't think you'd ever use it, but it worked. So being able to apply what I was learning really made it more interesting. Um, so being able to apply what I was learning really made it more interesting.
What was your name again?
Caitlin.
Caitlin.
Sarah's back for a second round?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, um, Sarah again. Um, yeah, this is actually my second time taking this class, well, kind of, apparently they, I noticed you guys added a B.
We did, we made a new class. That's called the Sarah B.
There's now Independent Project B, all because of you.
I really appreciate it, because I didn't know if my colleagues were gonna like that period I took in Project C. So that might look a bit like a fail.
There's your dent in the universe, you have a B now.
B in the program is that.
Yes, that is cool. Um, so, um, yeah, last year, actually, I decided to make a short film, which actually, yay, I finished it, it's done now, thankfully. It took about a year, a lot longer than I expected. And, um, part of the reason why I believe so much in this class actually is because of that ability, that your learning isn't really confined to the trimester. It not only expands in your life, like we've heard from so many people, making connections with different businesses and different people, using knowledge that you pull from the outside world, but it also literally is able to then go out of the time allotted and become a part of your life. And I, both of the projects I chose were very fundamentally a big part of my life. So the short film was great, because I actually intend on being a filmmaker. I would love to one day, you know, I'll try my hand at making movies. I guess we'll see how that goes, I'm trying to go to college for it, but you know, wherever the road takes me, I'm happy with a lot of things. Um, yeah, and the reason why I say that too is because I pursued a different, one of my interests, very different this year, this time around, I actually tried basically to construct a business, at least theoretically. Um, I created an entire business plan, and then my final presentation took the form of pitching that business plan to my panel. So, um, it was as if I was asking investors to then, you know, help out with my seedling company. So, um, both of those projects could not be more different, um, but I did draw from the same wealth of, um, where I'm motivate, what I'm motivated by. And, um, it involved a lot of what I learned from the year before, you know, I learned a lot about myself as a, as a student, as an independent person, as a person who will procrastinate if allowed to. So, but, um, I improved a lot through this class, and I cannot be a bigger advocate for it, because taking this class the first time around junior year and then taking it again were the two best decisions I've made in my high school career. So, yeah, um, I cannot be more thrilled to have gotten to participate in the pilot and then to see it be a reality. Like, I, I know, I don't know, it's been like a dream come true. This is everything that I could have hoped for to be a part of an education for a young person. This opportunity's been really, really profound for me.
Yeah, I told Mrs. Stott, one of my college essays, it was like, if you could change one thing about your high school career, what would it be? I said, take an independent project earlier.
There you go, yeah, you would have been great for last year.
Why?
Because, um, I feel like you don't get a lot of opportunity to show your talents in school, like, I had no idea that Anastasia was into makeup so much, or that like James knew how to 3D print stuff. I think it's cool that you get to showcase your talents that are outside of school, but that you're so clearly talented and you can still meet the same criteria, it's, it's a cool thing to be able to share what you're passionate about.
Do you remember what you said about doing something that you enjoy?
Oh, yeah. I didn't know that was allowed, like, doing something you enjoy in school, like, that was weird.
Yeah, um, along that line, something that I said a lot last year, recently, it just kept jumping to mind, was that, um, I felt that sometimes I felt, um, like my education was actually like inhibiting my growth as a person.
Totally agree.
Yeah, like, and I know, a lot of the times, and I can't stress it enough, like, obviously my education has what empowered me to be a, you know, an intellectual and, you know, um, curious person, you know? It, I cannot say that enough, like, I'm glad I go to school, you know? But, um, oftentimes I found that I came down to, am I gonna get to write the script or am I gonna have to do my math homework? You know? And it was in those moments that I got frustrated, and I felt discouraged, you know? And so this class really felt like the first time that it was facilitating my personal growth and stuff that I was really truly interested in.
Was like valued though, like, when you're doing it like valued, not like something that's extra in the way you just scored, it was like valued as part of it, which was really cool.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I noticed that, um, I think just about every one of you colleagues who are here tonight, um, had made a statement or answer to the, uh, the question around, they went above and beyond what was minimally required, whereas if you had a math assignment, you're not digging in deeper and doing, well, maybe Caitlin, doing twenty or more, you know, math problems. If you had to write an essay, you're not writing three essays.
Yeah.
But, you know, James' parents were like, you know, he comes in from the bedroom at eleven fifty tonight, you guys gotta wake up, look at what I just did. Everyone had their story of that. So just share a little bit about, about what drove you to do more than you were asked, more, and, and your own personal time, really, you spent on this, it's actually school assignments. So what drove you there?
I mean, one of the biggest parts for me is like, this kind of goes off what Sarah and Caitlin were saying, but that, it gave you like an hour at least to explore like this, like, your own passion project that you really just wanted to do because you wanted to do it. And like, there's just no other place where you can do that, especially in school, and like, as Sarah was saying, I mean, personally for me, I try to fill up my schedule as much as I possibly can, which makes it impossible to do the things that I love sometimes, which is rough. But like, so this class really gave me that point, and so once you, once you have that, it's just you put everything into it, because you need to see it finished, which I think that's what drove it for me. I mean, I really can't explain it, like, it's just, I loved this project and I loved doing it, and I really wanted to see it be finished.
Well, it's like why people play golf, or like, play pickup basketball, it's because they like it. So if you like your project, you're gonna keep doing it.
Yeah, so the difference is, and I've seen, I think, I was able to go to one presentation and, and that it extends so much further. Sarah, yours went an entire year, one trimester.
Yeah.
And, and to include other students in what you were doing, and, and then to take it again and do something completely on a different avenue, I mean, I think the trickle down of all that is remarkable. Um, I think a lot of people would have said, oh, the class is over, if you, that could be done, and you kept going because you wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's, I think, speaks volumes for what, what you've gotten from it.
Yeah, you know, actually, oh, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I suppose another reason actually why this class, um, was so, you know, I just felt so motivated to continue to work on it, you know? Even when I should have been doing that math design, you know? Um, you know, because that actually happened on a couple occasions. Um, the beginning of this year was particularly tricky, because I was both trying to finish the movie, make a business plan, and then be a senior in high school, you know? And, um, so that was a bit tricky, and my grades actually did kind of slip. And part of it was, man, a learning experience, that's for certain. I mentioned how I allowed myself to procrastinate. Um, part of the reason why my junior year project was great was because I had to learn not to, you know? It was a lot about self-discipline and setting personal deadlines, and sort of figuring out that aspect, I just was not good at time management. So, um, that skill became incredibly important in the beginning of this project. But, um, my point, I suppose, would be, um, you know, what you mentioned, um, that a lot of people might see it as trimester that it's done. That's, I feel, the nature of a lot of other courses that we encounter in our education, but this one doesn't feel like that's the case. Like Caitlin's putting up on the Google Play Store, not because it's part of the rubric, but because she wants to see this thing that she puts so much time and believes so deeply in, and it's so cool. She gave me just like even a little sample, at the time, wasn't it just saying everything was a butterfly?
Yeah.
And I think it thought your dog was a butterfly, yeah. We definitely went through some challenges with that.
But even when the, everything was a butterfly, you know, she was motivated to make it realize what it really was, you know? And so, um, yeah, and, um, even when the movie was done, I didn't want it just to be done, I decided to do two public screenings in the school community, you know? And so, um, I think a big part of it is because this class didn't pass fail, it actually gives us a lot more motivation to define what, like, you get the pass, but then what is actually success, you know? Because when it stops being about the A, there's another reason why you're working. And now that this class is so self-directed, the thing that you're working for is no longer the grade, it's a place of success that we're allowed to define for ourselves, you know? So for Anastasia, that's a video series, for Kate that was doing the gallery, for Caitlin that was finishing the app, for so many other people, you know, James, he wants to see if his little model, because he did, you know, this computer, um, 3D printed boat, he wants to see if it'll sail, you know? And so, and that's, the class is done, the class is over, but all of us are talking about future plans we have, you know? That's the beauty of it. You know, we, we don't feel like it's done because we don't feel like it's done. No one else is telling us it's not, but it's just because it's from inside.
So you got graded more on the process than on the final product?
You don't really get graded on anything. Like, I told Mrs. Stott, it's like, you're gonna, everyone passes, right? So like, you're going in with, like, if you put a grade on it, um, I think most people that they just do like way less, like, just do the easiest amount to get the grade, but then if there's no grade, there's no limit. So like, there's.
Well, you still do.
So I kind of had, going into it this year, because I taught the pilot last year, I kind of had two goals that I, or, or things that I wanted to work on as the instructor, the facilitator for the class. One of them was, I wanted to work on getting them mentors or, or connections with people in the community. And we did that to some extent this year, and I think we have some ideas about how we can keep doing that going forward, and we made some really good community connections this year. Um, but the other thing I really wanted to work on with them was, um, helping them get feedback that was valuable. And this is where Mike really came in and, and really came up with a great way to do this. So Mike said to them, okay, let's, when we're conferencing, let's look at the capacities, and let's sit down, and why don't you guys pick a couple that you would really like feedback on? And they did that at the beginning of the course, but I think the thing that was really special for me, or that was really, um, very impactful, when Mike and I were sitting and conferencing with them, is he and I started to ask them questions about, okay, so you want feedback on, um, your presentation skills, but you're really good at presenting. So everybody's just gonna tell you, no, you, you did a great job, Anastasia, you did an awesome job presenting, you present really naturally to an audience. So Mike and I started asking the question of, well, what do you really want feedback on? What would actually be helpful for you? So I found that a lot of the students were maybe willing to take a little more of a risk and say, well, you know, like Caitlin, I'm thinking of yours. She said, you know, I want people to look at the app and actually say, well, is this attractive? Is it easy to use? Is it understandable? Would you actually give this to your kids? So, um, I think that that was something that was pretty important for us this year. And I mean, Mike was so, so valuable in helping to figure out a way to make those capacities usable for the students. I know Caitlin wanted to see them as like, you know, a sixth grader, but, you know, I think a lot of the time, as, as an instructor of, I have mostly juniors and, and some seniors. Um, and I, if I were to show those to my juniors, it would be like a lead balloon going over, and they would look at it and say, what does this mean and why do I care? But in this class, I think you guys are, are motivated enough, and you're articulate, and you're engaged, and you're interested, so those capacities become a really powerful tool.
The other thing about the capacities that, you know, made me want to focus on it more this year was to really kind of, um, encourage the students to, to take a, I don't want to say a more serious look at their content, but, but I guess it, it did end up being so. So they all had different content, so there's nothing that we could really help them in terms of figuring out content. James's physics problems, he had to figure out way over my head. Um, and, and even like the science behind some of the, the chemicals and compounds that were in Anastasia's dirty makeup examples, you know, she had to learn a lot about just the, those elements and what they are, and why they're harmful for, you know, to put on the largest organ in your body, your skin. Um, and so having them, you know, I really have made this concerted effort to have them look at those capacities, because while they're looking at the capacities, I think that it sort of naturally forced them to, to look at the content that they were dealing with a little differently, and approach that content in a way that led to, I think, some deeper understandings. You know, so, you know, when you look at the critical thinking skills and how it's laid out on those capacities, and when we put them in front of the students, say, well, let's read this, and really, let's talk about what they mean. I think then they were able to say, okay, I see how I can apply that one to what I'm doing, and, you know, I really am gonna produce better work, and I'm gonna go a little deeper if I focus on the capacity while I'm looking at, you know, clean makeup versus dirty makeup, or while I'm looking at these physics problems, or while I'm looking at this app, or, you know, really anything. And, and, you know, even for Kate, you know, I told Kate at the end, I said, you know, you know, hers was the one I was a little more worried about than the rest, because I was like, well, where's the rigor coming from academically? You know, the, the capacities are super important, but, you know, having this gallery come together, it, it really is just about like bringing a community together and communicating. And I realized like, wow, like, after Kate kind of identified the capacities, it was like, well, that, that transcends content, whether it's, you know, in the core subject areas, and, you know, she's gonna gain some valuable skills, just, you know, trying to curate this and get people involved and communicate and, um, with people and bring them together. And so they really, like, after they looked closely at the capacities, like, I felt much better that they were gonna push themselves a, a little bit more and, and kind of see through their vision.
You know, actually, um, talking about the capacities, I now totally understand them, but last year, they were the most frustrating thing for me ever. Um, partially because I felt like I was making a project that was very opposed to the general regulations of the class. Um, because basically, I, I remember this one particular thing, I had to make a work cited list, but I was directing a short film. And so I was like, okay. Yeah, I was so mad.
Why are you making me do this?
Yeah, and, um, so guidelines are kind of my least favorite thing, which is part of the reason why, when I saw independent projects, it was the first thing I had in my course license, even before my core classes. Um, and so, um, for me this year, though, what I was actually able to do was, now that I kind of understood a little bit more the opportunities for personal development that had come as a result of my last year's project, um, I, when I looked at the capacities this time around, I not only see what was, saw what was on the sheet, but I was able to see why selecting capacity for a particular reason could be more about the growth that I wanted to see in myself throughout the course. So really, what it got me thinking about in general was the goals that I had to set for myself, you know? Because it shouldn't just be, you know, like, figure out what kind of bike I want to use, because I was gonna make a mobile food bike, beverage business, that was my business. Um, so not only the, yeah, it was, it was really cool.
It is really cool.
Yeah, um, but, uh, what's it called? Not only the bike, but, you know, I want to get better at time management, so looking at the capacities gave me an opportunity to reflect along with, you know, obviously great academic support, you know, of you and Mr. Kiefer. And through that, I was able to identify, you know, specific goals for myself, and talk my weaknesses in a open and supportive environment.
I think you touched on something too, that, that, with the capacities, because Gail does a great job in, in presenting, the curriculum committee talks about it, we talk about it a lot here in this room, around this table, but being there and watching your presentation and seeing those black and white words on the paper alive and happening right in front of us or me in, in that presentation, gave it so much meaning.
Yep.
Um, I have goosebumps, but it was, it was really, really interesting, because it's, you know, it's one thing to hear it in a presentation here, and I, we all support those capacities and, and the meaning behind them, but to see what it looks like and, and your passions and, um, to see it come to life was really cool.
What's kind of cool is a little over six years ago, um, we had a couple of what we call education summits, where we had a lot of adults in town, fifty or sixty, that were invited to help us, um, identify, if you're gonna be leaving our schools, what do you need besides, you said a perfect form, just be able to regurgitate facts, okay? Because what's that gonna really serve you when you need to be here? And we identified those fifteen outcomes, we call them capacities, and to hear how you all have kind of breathed life into them in your projects, I mean, for me, it's very affirming that we're doing the right thing by kids, you know, being able to do that in your US history class is the challenge, and, you know, in your math class, in your science class and so forth, so, but it's really cool to hear that, so. So.
I kind of feel like maybe all students that are, at least students who anticipate going to post-secondary education at some point, whether it be for an associate's degree or full four-year college or beyond, I think what you have all been through gives you a good taste of the positive aspects of college, but also, you know, an understanding of what can go wrong if you're not careful. You, you know, like, you know, I have two daughters that are already in college, and I spent the last few years telling them, like, you are gonna love college, because you get to study, by and large, other than some, you know, required courses, most of what you're gonna study in college is stuff that you're passionate about. And so learning to marry your passion with some self-discipline and some self-direction, and that's what, that's what these independent studies are all about, really prepares you for college in a big way, I think.
And I will say that, you know, not just the ladies who are here, but students from last year have shared that they've often reflected on their experience in this class when they're writing their essays for colleges. It's a pretty, I think it's a really neat, unique thing that you're able to write about when you're trying to show a university what you're interested in and who you are. And I don't know if you guys just for a moment could maybe speak to the feedback that you got, because I know that you had an opportunity to see it as you were attending one of the presentations. But I'm able to give them a folder, which has feedback from all of the adults who sat on the panel, as well as their peers who attended. And it's written feedback. And I don't know if you guys can speak to anything that you thought was important in the feedback you got, or?
I, it was really nice for me to like get the feedback. Like, I think my first comment, once I got it, was like, I'm gonna frame this. But not because it was all, it was all constructive feedback. I mean, that's the most important thing, is because like, since this was such a passion project for all of us, it's like, yes, we want it to be successful, but it's also, you know, we're high schoolers, it's not going to be perfect. Like, me and Sarah have talked about how much we both struggle with time management, because, as I said earlier, it's like, I do too many things, and so then I'm like, oh, I want to do this and this and this and this, and then nothing gets done, because I'm too busy trying to spread myself too thin. Yeah, exactly. I'm sure lots of people here understand. But, so, getting that feedback was like, first of all, it was, it was really great to see that people understood what I was trying to say. Like, you know, understood the meaning and what I was trying to convey with, you know, catharsis, but also for future passion projects and projects that I hope to endeavor upon, like, you know, in college and things like that. It's, this class really helped me find that structure that I've been needing, because that can provide me with, you know, okay, here's the plan, here's how I'm going to do it, and this is how I'm gonna do these four different projects with this structure. And so like getting, getting those, you know, that feedback was really good to see, like, you know, how I could transfer this to other projects and things like that.
For me, the feedback told me I was going in completely wrong direction. Like, the two days before my presentation, I was like putting so much effort into my presentation. Like, they're gonna think I don't know much about neural networks, they're gonna put in like every last detail, and then when I presented it, I realized that I could have gone surface level, and I needed to even go above that. Like, so I think, for me, the feedback kind of showed me that, like, what I learned wasn't what my audience is gonna get out of it, and how to communicate my ideas more effectively was gonna be a really big challenge. So I need to work on that.
There's a capacity right there that you can talk about in terms of bragging.
Right, right, right.
Could I ask a follow-up college question to, according, similar with Mr. Klascan mention, but I assume most of you are probably heading to some form of post-secondary education. Has this experience changed in any way some of your assumptions about what college would be like, or has it changed what you're looking for in college?
Hundred percent.
Yes.
I toured schools, and so, like, I just got into Yale, and when I went back to the campus to tour, I realized none of the kids there knew how to be independent. They all struggled with like taking too much activities, not knowing how to do self-direction, and they were all stressed. And I was like, okay. So I think, like, by looking at that one, I don't think many kids in high school have an opportunity to grow and to figure it out. If you're just constantly beginning work and you're constantly doing the work, you never realize to take a step back and be like, why am I doing this? Do I like it? What do I want to do? How can I grow as a person? And I think that that has changed a lot of my perspectives. Like, finding people who are passionate about what they're doing and doing it for like genuine interest has become like a big part of my college search, I think.
I completely agree. Like, so I, as I've mentioned, like, I do a lot of stuff, not to brag, obviously, or anything like that, it's probably, you know, worse for me. But, so last year, I was part of, you know, organizing the whole March for Our Lives thing at Daniel Hand. And so from that, I kind of found, okay, this is how I need, like, I was able to find, like, myself as a leader, I think, more, you know, it was more relevant. Like, I've always known that I'm, you know, I'm loud, so I can get people to do what I want. But like, so I actually found how I could maybe do that more effectively. And one of the things that I did find, however, was that it was really difficult to find people who were as passionate about something, and it doesn't have to be the same thing as I am. Like, as I said before, and as we've all touched upon, like, we're willing to like kind of drop our academics, I mean, no offense, you're the Board of Education, but it like goes out the window when you're in a passion project and you're just like, I need to get all of this done. And of course, that's a problem too, but whatever. So finding people like that has really changed my search. And I mean, that was after, so that was after I was organizing the March for Our Lives thing. But after, after taking this class, it kind of became more relevant in how I could find that, because a lot of schools and a lot of, a lot of like academic environments will say, claim to, you know, take responsibility for the student and try to cater to the student in that similar way. But for me, it often falls short, because, for example, I was visiting a college a few years ago, I think, and they were like, yeah, we try to let the student, you know, explore any opportunity that they so choose, but they didn't have any facilitators like you guys, so it was kind of just chaos, because there was no, there was no, what are they called? What's, the capacities, that's what it's called. But there was no capacities for learning, there was nothing like that. So after I visited Sarah Lawrence, and I haven't gotten in or anything like that, but they were very focused on the conference project idea and creating something to further your learning with, you know, what you learned in the class, into a project of your own making, of your own creation, of your own interest, which is exactly what we did here. And for me, like, I found, you know, these are all people who are really passionate about what they do, and, you know, and really are willing to put themselves in it to win it, to be cliche. But like, really, and that's what I need, because that kind of environment is going to push me to do, you know, more than I thought was possible.
I also wanted to say, what William's class showed me was like, failure is okay. Like, so like, a lot of kids like struggle, like, I have to, like, I'm gonna stay until midnight, I need to ace this next tomorrow. But like, risk project, I was like, I'm gonna make an app, we'll put it out on the Google Play Store at the end of sixty days, and it's like, that's absurd. Like, why would you ever pick that? Like, you're obviously gonna fail. And like, I did, it's not on the Play Store yet. So like, it gave you the opportunity to make that lofty goal and work as hard as you can to get there with no repercussion if you didn't make it.
I wanted to finish my movie a trimester.
And I completely learned that I ever would have thought. So like, I think that was pretty cool, too. It's like, it allows you to have the opportunity to fail in a safe environment.
I completely agree with that. And like, I mean, theologically, I knew that failure was okay, because you always hear that, it's like, failure is just like a step in the ladder, or whatever. And I'm like, yeah, okay, I agree with that, like, yeah, totally.
My transcript.
Yeah, exactly. But in this class, I actually failed. Like, I had a big failure. And so I'll just explain it real quick, so that you don't think I like made a huge, awful, terrible mistake. But, so I had a receiving day for the art, so I had, I invited people from the community to come in and like drop off their art. I got one person. I was there for six hours. That doesn't really add up, does it? No. So I, that was an epic fail.
Remember, we talked about Plan B?
Yeah, and of course, yeah, exactly.
And D.
I was prepared for that, because deep down inside, you know you're gonna fail. You know it's gonna happen. You're like, I didn't do enough for this. But, so I had like, I had tried to advertise it around, but I wasn't talking about it. And after failing, I realized that, okay, I can't just accept it, because you have to keep going in this class, which is, you know, because I feel like, since I do a lot of different projects, I'm just bouncing from one to the next. And, you know, if I find one minor inconvenience, I'll be like, okay, fine, it's over. And so after finding that failure, but still having to push past it, I was actually able to grow as someone and as a leader of these projects. So I forgot what I was talking about. But anyway, that's, it really like helped you realize, like, okay, all these things that I like know, but I don't really understand, I've never really experienced failure, I can now say that I have, and like, I actually learned something from it, for myself, as like a student and as just a learner and a person in general.
Sarah, my friend, this last year, I had a little riddle with the kids at a course, and said, why don't they kind of guess who my greatest teacher was? And the irony was that, you know, it's not a person, it's failure. My greatest lessons in life, I've learned from doing something, I'm doing it well, and doing it better the next time. And then equally, Amy said to me, well, isn't it interesting that the entire system that you oversee as superintendent is completely counter and adverse to failure?
Ouch.
It's true, and it's a true point, that we set up a system, school system, to set up for all of the students to be averse to failure, yet deep down, we know, I'm sure around this table, we know that some of our greatest lessons are from things that we have fallen short of in our home. This creates space for you guys to actually experience that and learn from it. And Kate, your example is great, you've all had these, you know, examples.
Anastasia, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, so going back to what Kate said, I'm very good at starting things, but I'm very bad at finishing them. I started a YouTube channel about beauty and fashion, everything, my sophomore year in the fall, and that was going great, and I loved it, but then I kind of ran into the problem of like, where is the time for all of this? Like, I'm in my sophomore year, you know, it's like an hour to film, and then editing is insane, and trying to upload it, and get a schedule, and trying to market yourself, because the clean beauty thing was more just, it's not just a project, it's helping others, and like, you gotta be clean to live a healthy life. And I also started a jam company, Jam City, in January of last year, just for no reason, I just, I just found something I was good at, and I did it, but then I realized I don't know how to sell jam, I don't know how to market a business, maybe that's my project next year, but then I just kind of gave up. I sold at the Strawberry Jazz Festival this summer and sold everything I had, and that was amazing. But then I just kind of, like, no one really came back, because I didn't market myself the right way. So I kind of let that drop off, but for this project, like, I had to get it done, it was a class, I had to do it. So I did it, and now I feel like I definitely want to go back in the whole YouTube thing with the new series coming out in the new year. So I think this definitely pushed me to be a better person, actually get stuff done.
Imagine if those failures were part of a letter grade system, and those failures got averaged in with the successes. None of you, none of you would have gotten an A.
Got like a D.
Yeah.
I don't consider this experience to be a D.
I guess the one thing I would say, from the educator's point of view in this classroom, is there's, and I guess this would be true in parenting, too. There's a good, like, thirty percent of the time, I felt like Mike and I were trying really hard to be directly engaged with the students, and conferencing, or reading things, or giving suggestions. And then there's a good thirty percent of the time where I feel like you have to sit back and watch. And then there's forty, forty percent of the time where you just have to get the hell out of the way. I mean, like, really? And that is extremely difficult for an educator to do, because you see, and you just, you want to go in there, but it is very difficult to do as an educator, but it is, the reward is very powerful. And, you know, I mean, these, these four ladies here, I think, showed you, you know, the accomplishments that they were able to really reach for themselves at the end of the course. And that, for me, is where the meaning comes from, is they set a goal for themselves and are able to reflect on whether they met or didn't meet, or in what ways they grew. And yeah, I guess that that's where the value, for me, comes in.
Yeah. And for me, this is more selfish a bit. You know, Tom mentioned six years ago, you know, when we, you know, started this vision, and we worked hard on those, developing the capacities from scratch. And I remember we had, you know, people like Deb Reed was coming in to help us with it, and I think it was Deb, one of our consultants, who, in talking to me about the capacities and how do we assess them, she said, I want you to look at this video on YouTube, and I encourage everybody to look at it, because it kind of mirrors what we've done here in Madison. She's like, just Google or go to YouTube and search the independent project. She said, I know it happened somewhere in the Berkshires in Massachusetts, she's like, just watch it. And this was a school within a school that students had developed. It was the students who brought the idea forth to the administration, and they got some facilitators involved, and basically, they spent part of their days working on a passion project. And the video chronicles, I think one of the students' passions was video, so he documented the whole thing. And it did a, did a great job. And so it really, like, for me, it was like, yes, that's, that's the goal. Like, that's how these capacities come to life, this is how kids, you know, who maybe aren't invested in all their core academic classes, get really invested in school. And so for me, like, the big thrill of being part of this course is seeing that model that I was really inspired by come to life with our own students.
Awesome.
It sounds funny coming from a school board member, but it's like the Mark Twain quote, don't let school get into your education.
Thank you for sharing.
Outstanding. Next, you mentioned next year? Yes, okay, good. I'm going to throw her next year.
Jackie, too.
She's gonna be a D.
Sorry, you can go back for number three. Don't invite me.
She can be on our panel as providing feedback.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Don't think I'm letting you get away.
Excellent, Jackie.
So I had a friend, I didn't take this class this year. I'm planning on taking it next year. I just love hearing people talk about things they're passionate about. Like, it's just like, it makes me so happy. But so I have so many friends, it's that whole like judging a fish on their ability to climb a tree thing.
Yes.
I have so many friends who will tell me, oh, I'm just not smart, I just can't do it. And I have a friend who took this class, and I know she doesn't get the best grades in school, but hearing her talk about her project, it was something she was passionate about, and really went over the top to finish and complete, and she just loved talking about it, and she went so in-depth in everything. And it's just like, it makes me happy, because I hate when people label themselves, being like, I'm dumb, I can't do it. And just seeing someone being, like, just, the first time they're given the opportunity to do something that they just wanted to do, and showing themselves that they could do it too. Like, she was telling me how much it meant for her, and showing her that she could do more than she thought she could, and all this other stuff. And I just think it's an amazing place.
Because everyone has that thing that they're passionate about, that's the thing. Like, that's why, I mean, what you were saying, is that's how you get kids to, because I feel like a huge also problem at hand is that a lot of kids just don't, it doesn't seem like they're very impassioned by anything, and it seems like they're just apathetic to everything. But that's not the case, there's always that one little thing, but you just have to find it. And they might not know it's there, and that's why, you know, not everyone is necessarily fit to take this class, but like, it's there. Everyone has it.
We had that one girl, Grace, in our class, and she was like, I want to be a teacher, and I want to do, she wanted to do psychology, right? And so she like presented to a bunch of eighth graders about her mental health project, and she was like, after, it's like, yeah, not teaching eighth grade. Like, I'm gonna go.
The moral of the story is.
Jackie, your point is well taken, that this is not for a specific type of student necessarily. This really can be accessed by just by anybody, if they're driven, and if they find their why, their purpose. How kind of unfolds if you have your why?
Yeah, I feel like four, wasn't everyone, I already knew what I wanted to do, but wasn't everybody else who figured out what they wanted to do with their lives as a result of this project?
Yeah.
So all five of us left with jobs. At least, you know. But we might as well have felt like we'd found it, you know, because we already had felt like we'd taken a step towards living the rest of our lives, you know?
Such a great presentation, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you. So we are moving on, no other matters. Board member panelists.
I moved to a chair, it doesn't get better.
I could listen to the talk all day long. So exciting, and I think it should be a board member, there should be a board member on every panel. Because it really was so meaningful to see what we talked about in boring ways.
Yeah.
And you could see a sampling of the ideas, but there were so many ideas and projects that were incredibly impressive, not just because of the success, but because of the struggle.
Exactly.
And that was really incredible, to see how much struggle there was. I mean, not one person said, I'm done, I'm dropping the class.
Way more than you could ever have expected.
Yeah. And, you know, I think Jackie's point, Tom said the same thing, I would underscore that point. This covers a broad spectrum of students, a lot of different capacities and a lot of different learning needs. I thought your point was really well taken, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah, yeah, very well.
I think in our district, because there's such a value, a self-motivated value among a lot of our students based on top grades, you know, competitive, you know, academics, that I think a lot of the kids do become apathetic, or maybe some of the kids who just don't feel like they're gonna get a five-point-oh on a four-point scale, you know, they're just like, I'm not even gonna try, you know? Maybe they give up a little bit of learned helplessness, and then to, to find a course like this, where you get to explore not only your passions, but find those special talents that you have, and those qualities as a student, that you haven't been using, that were dormant, and you get to use them in this setting, I think is probably, you know, can be life-changing for these kids.
I think the most important piece for this, too, is you get those outcomes without the currency of GPA, without the currency of grades. So the purity of the learning experience is really for the sake of learning.
I had someone make, somebody make a comment to me, to a phrase I've never heard before,
Transcript aesthetics. And that is the aspiration of not just hand, but just high school kids across the country. Transcript aesthetics, you want the beautiful transcript. And there are kids who would fear, you know, that maybe having a pass or fail on my transcript would take away from the aesthetics from the admissions council looking at my transcript. Um, so interesting quote, I thought, wow, that's, you know, that could be the tail wag of the dog, you know, for a lot of kids unfortunately, so. But this creates space for kids that, it's just very inspiring.
Um, committee reports. Curriculum and student development.
Talk about, come back to follow.
I'm glad you're going first.
Come over here, give your mind to me.
I know it, but my time's over. It's all you. You've already been in the hot seat. Exactly. You got it, I believe it.
Well, all right, in a related note, uh, we, uh, met this morning and, uh, got a curriculum update about computer technical education from Dan Grenear. Uh, touched on many of the same themes, capacities. Um, he noted that Madison recently won the Connecticut Technical Education Excellence Award. Is that the correct acronym? Uh, and also hosted the, uh, most recent robotics competition, which I guess went smashingly well. And, um, then he talked about the, uh, changes to the curriculum, to the, uh, criminal justice curriculum in terms of delivery, rigor, and assessment. And, um, I have also various details on the old, um, the old methods, but the new one stresses more of a holistic view on, uh, the police, the court, the correction system. It involves, uh, performance-based assessments and presentations as opposed to, and collaboration as opposed to just multiple choice tests. He then moved on to, uh, computer technical education, and this was kind of exciting. Uh, he talked about rapid prototyping using 3D printers, um, other subtractive prototyping, and then programming automated, uh, processing for manufacturing using robots. Then Gail proceeded to quiz Emily and me on how many new units have been created during the curriculum cycle, and Kirk as well. And, um,
Snap check failure.
Well, Emily won.
Should I say Emily's?
Over five hundred and fifty, I think.
Five hundred and thirty-seven.
Five hundred and thirty-seven, there you go.
Units since, since we started the curricular cycles have been adopted.
Right, and I think the important thing is that, um, there's faculty buy-in. Quite rigorous effort goes into it.
They're writing it, they're buying it.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, they're buying it because they're writing it.
It's like arguing with yourself.
Then we, Peter and I and, um,
Chris Pack, William.
Paul, Pags.
Right, I have a little note spelling, question mark, all right, Pags. Uh, present the way in which genocides and the Holocaust are studied within history classes at the K through eight high school levels. The inquiry is developmentally appropriate for, for each, uh, level. Grade three focuses on Native American, uh, chief Uncas in the Pequot War. Grade seven on human rights equality and governance. Uh, and high school students study a number of genocides and analyze a number of common themes. We reviewed some state-driven policy changes to graduation requirements. Gail, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think the presentation tonight definitely is part of the thinking there is a, a new requirement for districts to develop a mastery-based assessment. And this is one of the considerations of multiple pathways to get to that one credit. But that demonstration is perfect timing. It's all around the capacities and really doing and seeing what kids are doing.
And then I'm going to fold my next committee report into this because you just mentioned it. So I was the learn liaison, thank you, Emily. Um, and they talked about, uh, changes based on mastery-based, performance-based thing. Learn also is financially healthy, um, and, um, should have no piece of these, so they say. And they also discussed later start dates and, uh, school bus schedules, logistical problems that, that are a bother. Finally, going back to curriculum, um, we discussed the literacy coach, and I had to step out. So Gail, do you have anything to add about that?
Yeah, it's just really going back to the last board presentation, asking if there's any questions or any further information we can offer of that session.
So those are my two reports, so.
Can you save that phone? Is that what that noise is? It's driving that one? Has it been touched?
We'll be recording.
I think, um, is it in the copy room?
Sounds like it's going over there.
Oh my gosh.
It's everywhere.
I know, I hear it like over there.
No, don't be sorry, thank you. I thought it was at my ears. All right, communications committee. Nothing to report. Facilities.
We had a postponed meeting, so there's no report.
I can still hear it.
Right, me too, it's going to be ringing in my ear all night. Um, finance committee.
Yeah, we met with, um, with, um, Stacy Nobitz, who took us through, um, the detail of the, um, numbers for this year's budget. I think we're on, um, my view and obviously anyone who was there, um, feel free to, um, just, uh, a loss for English.
China.
To disagree, there it is. But in any event, I think we're on, uh, very solid footing. Uh, the budget is going to be down year over year from last year's budget. I think it's very understandable, uh, in terms of, uh, headcount reduction and also fewer hours worked. Uh, and that resulted from the reconfiguration of the schools. Uh, and then the offsets, uh, are, are also very understandable. Uh, you've got, uh, an increase in salaries due to, uh, due to very, I think, uh, well-negotiated salary increases. Uh, and, uh, we have some increase in insurance, uh, but that, um, is, um, much less than we had expected. So I think the budget is very understandable and it's down year over year. Uh, and I think that should be very acceptable, uh, to the community and very easy to explain. Back to coffee shop.
Um, personal.
Nothing to report from this panel.
Policy.
Policy committee, I want to open by saying that the policy committee has recently been voted, voted, uh, most efficient committee.
Oh, really?
And now that's part of the permanent record and I can say anything and it gets to be part of the record. So tonight we met efficiently as usual and, uh, looked at policy forty-one, forty-one, social networking. So I want to hang on this one for a minute. So I believe you have this in your packet. So can somebody confirm that? I don't have the paper packet, I have my electronic version. So if you can turn to that page, I would encourage you at some point to take a look at that. It is a very short policy. And we recently passed forty-one, forty-one as a revision probably three or four months ago. Um, and attempted in revising that policy to get to this, but didn't quite get there. And then this version came out, um, from shipment in Goodwin and the, uh, policy committee liked it so much that we are moving it forward and we're asking the board to consider a waiver of the readings. Since this is effectively the same idea, just more efficiently distilled. So, um, we will raise that later for, I think, the voting period, uh, during the voting period of the meeting. Um, for us to first consider waiving the readings and then voting on the policy as it stands. Um, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, again, it is in the packet, it's very brief and it is more or less the same thing that you've seen before, better version.
Right, do you want to add a motion for later in the, it's not on the agenda for today?
Yeah, yes, unless there's any objection to adding that as a motion. Okay, so that should be before forty-one, forty-one. Then we, you all, also be saying tonight, fifty-one thirteen, student attendance, which has been moved forward now for a third reading. We had postponed the third reading so the committee could look at some minor changes that came up. Um, no issues there and we are moving forward for the final reading and vote tonight. Um, there are two items that you have for first reading, I believe, tonight. Fifty-one ten point four, which is suspension slash expulsion from school slash school activities, which are moving forward for a first reading as written. The committee also looked at fifty-one forty-four, which is physical restraint slash seclusion slash exclusionary timeout. Um, which we blew forward for a first reading and I want to note two things about it. One is that it has a new title, so fifty-one forty-four had a different title previously and it's being adjusted. So keep that in mind as you're looking at it, that it's a slightly different title than before, so please go by the number. And we made a slight grammar adjustment on line thirty-five, which we should pull up previously.
It's not in our packets though.
Very, is it not in your packets, either of those? What kind do you want thirteen is?
We have fifty-one thirteen, no, not the, um, this package. Not the expulsion one or the?
For the, for the first?
No, the, their first reading.
First readings?
It, it usually is, yes.
Yeah, I thought it was usually there for a first reading.
If the policy meeting is the same night.
Maybe not.
I mean, policy sees it first and then?
And then it goes to the next one. That's what we've been trying to do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not assumed it's going to leave the committee.
Okay, so you will see that, you will see both of those for first reading.
Next.
Next time.
Since you're looking at the bylaws, you can consider that.
We should address that as we're considering that. Um, yeah, and the, you've heard about the graduation requirements, we're hoping to hear more about that in summer.
End of summer.
End of summer. Okay, I don't know if you want to elaborate on why we're looking at that in the summer.
Uh, yeah, it really requires that I get, uh, uh, more people around the, the work, around the diploma assessment than what's currently available during the school year. So, a lot of people looking at that.
And then we looked at ninety-six ten, ninety-six twenty, and ninety-six thirty. So that's been sitting on our agenda for a while. There are conflicts in language between those items, uh, in the bylaws and we have discussed that and we're going to look at, um, coming, moving forward a revision of those three bylaws, potentially into just two bylaws. Uh, and you'll hopefully see that sometime in January or February.
Which involve policy development.
All policy development, the sorts of things that we're talking about right now. To clarify the process and make sure we're all on the same page. End of report.
Thank you. Um, learn liaison.
Baked it in.
Baked it in, you baked it in?
It was.
Did it, okay. Try board.
Try board, uh, at our last meeting, uh, we had a presentation on, um, transportation of students, uh, in the Madison, uh, community, uh, when we had the public forum. There was a lot of concern about any commute that lasts, uh, more than forty-five minutes. And so one of the topics that we wanted to address in considering possible further reconfiguration of the school facilities is what would the implications be for transportation? And so our, uh, gave us a presentation on the way it, it currently works. Uh, and we'll build that into, uh, the options that we eventually, uh, advance for your all's consideration because, uh, tran, the length of the transportation is a key criteria that will have to be considered, uh, in any of the options that we, that we present.
We're, we're back in about eight hours. Our next meeting.
Moving on. Audience response? Yeah. That's our first applause I ever. Thank you, Kate. Kate, please do, it's good for us. Um, okay, so I need a motion, um, to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
There are a couple donations I wanted to point out that were very generous. Uh, Jean Garrity, uh, made a, an independent, uh, personal one thousand dollar donation to Daniel Hand High School for students in need of financial assistance for expenses such as class trips, yearbooks, class photos, prom, capping gown, class rings, and stuff like that. Um, and there was a rather large donation of nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Vibe Supporters to the Daniel Hand High School Vibe Show Choir for equipment to provide a video wall backdrop for the show. Um, and, uh, Vibe Supporters always doing a fantastic job of fundraising, uh, and this is no exception. Thank you all for those, uh, and thank you both for those wonderful donations.
Very generous and thoughtful.
Question, how does need get communicated?
In this first.
The, uh, with respect to taking advantage of the thousand dollars, how, how would that need? So a student would come to someone?
So through the office, yeah, through the office, primarily the guidance department and so forth. Where it's a case-by-case basis, we do have a free-to-use lunch list, uh, of students that we needed to kind of verify, but it's usually done in a very candid, case-by-case basis quietly.
And the students are aware that that assistance exists.
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, anything where there's a fee involved, maybe, for example, athletics, you know, we have the registration fee, there's always a disclaimer, you know, that if there's an issue with field trip form, and it goes out, that field trip coming up, you know, there's always a disclaimer. If there's an, you know, issue with paying for the field trip, contact's over, so, so it's, you know.
Thank you. Those donations, um, oh, thank you. No, so discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Um, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December fourth, twenty eighteen Board of Education meeting.
Absolutely.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, correct. Motion passes. Now I think we need to add.
Forty-one. Uh, motion to waive the readings regarding policy forty-one, forty-one, social networking.
Do you need a second?
Yeah.
Second.
I won't.
No, you don't, because it's out of phase.
It's from policy committee.
Might as well to, I think to waive a reading, I think that's a board purview.
Okay, motion to waive the readings.
It's kind of, uh, yeah, we'll carry it off.
Second.
There it is.
Okay. You moved it.
Yep.
Correct. Um, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Um, now, so that was adding it.
Motion to approve policy forty-one, forty-one, social networking, which is from the policy committee.
It does not, it's not a second.
Do we get a second?
You don't need one.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Um, action item, I'm sorry, motion to approve fifty-one thirteen, student attendance. Doesn't need a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries. You got, hey, abstained.
Maybe difficult, Laura, not a bad question.
Sorry, I know.
Hey, I've got your back.
Oh, sweet, thank you.
Oh, we have three people on this.
Thank you, love it.
So we have three different versions.
We are most efficient. Um, motion to discuss and take action on the voluntary normal retirement incentive plan for certified administrators.
So, sorry, is it?
Um, discussion.
Should we just describe, have someone describe briefly what the plan is? Because I, um, I think it's a worthy, um, idea and I could go for it. I think if someone can discuss the features of the plan, that would be great.
So historically, we have, um, offered early retirement incentive packages to different bargaining units. Most often, the teachers bargaining unit, when it's a kind of a win-win arrangement. It's a benefit to the district, though we lose some great people, and a benefit to the individuals in the bargaining unit. So that's the same case here with this, with much smaller bargaining unit. Uh, but with the upcoming budget, um, this is something that the board will certainly, you'll take access to, an advantage of the board, not access and advantage of the board's budget, um, you know, at the cost of, um, some, some great people who very love the district, um, who, uh, will, you know, if they can take advantage of this, will move on to retirement. Um, and then we will then recruit and, uh, and lift our, our leadership team and how we'll, um, arrange that team for two thousand nineteen, two thousand one.
But also invite a closure of the building, yeah.
Absolutely, yep. Closure of the aisle, that will be reducing an administrator already.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Somebody have any old business?
Can I just give a quick shout-out? Something I want to just compliment someone about. The exposure, the music exposure that my children are getting at Jeffrey Elementary is so enriching and adorable. And the encore group came to, to sing to them this week and they were excited days in advance and days after. And then a harpist played during lunchtime and it just, um, is this really nice moment that is enriching their lives for all the children at a, you know, busy building full of small, noisy people. And to have a harpist play at lunchtime is just, I just love it and.
We actually?
Local harpist?
I, I hope it is, Megan, or I don't know.
I'm not sure who the harpist is, but I know that we do Music Mondays at different elementary schools and so forth. So we've had, um, those kind of programs, kind of cool, during lunchtime with young guys, it's, it's really cool.
It's really, it's just a, a really nice action. I just wanted to give a shout-out.
Thanks for sharing. Um, future agenda items. Um, meetings and dates of appointments are attached.
Well, there's one that's not out here, that's tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
The board members are invited specifically from the Board of Finance, or by the Board of Finance to attend their Board of Finance meeting, which will specifically.